Your name and your comment. For the record, do we have any comments at the first public comment period? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item is to approve the agenda. It is in order and ready for your approval.
And I have a motion to accept the agenda. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive the CEO report. And I'll tell you, I start today's report with a heavy heart because we're saying goodbye to some of our commissioners today. If I could get the screen working, huh? Is it on? Guess mine's on. Okay. I will, I'll work that one.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. Good. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'll be in use gray. Oh, there we go. Okay. So, our first farewell is to Ms. Keith Councilman George Gault, who has served on the RTC Board since 2018. During his tenure, Councilman Gault has provided, provided thoughtful input and leadership on behalf of Clark County and his residents and certainly staff here at the RTC. He has served on our Finance Committee and asked us great questions. He provided input on many transportation initiatives, always ensuring that we were being good stewards of public funds. Through the years, Councilman Gault also attended RTC community events and interacted with key stakeholders and customers. So, a way to represent Councilman. On behalf of the RTC and our community, thank you so much for your dedication to Southern Nevada. You are going to be sorely missed. Next, we say farewell to Boulder City Mayor Pro Tem Claudia Bridges. Joining the RTC Board in 2021, and I'll tell you, it's much too short because we were just so excited to have you on our commission. Mayor Pro Tem Bridges quickly jumped in and showed her passion for cycling by supporting our Bike Safety Maintenance Event and has since been a staunch advocate for many transportation initiatives. Councilwoman Bridges also always asked very, very thoughtful questions about our processes and policies to ensure that we are being accountable and transparent. Additionally, she contributed much of her time to regional planning efforts as a member of the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition. Mayor Pro Tem Bridges, we're gonna miss your pink bike and your spunk. We had an event, she showed up, her bike was pink, her clothes were pink, and she, she, it was amazing, great energy. We wish you well on your future endeavors. She's gonna head up to the great Northwest. And again, you will be very, very much, very missed.
Thank you. We're gonna do a photo opportunity with them right now. And I'd like to afford you the opportunity to maybe say a few words here.
I was, I was very excited when I had the opportunity to sit on this board. And my experience with leadership and staff, extremely professional, very enjoyable. I, I believe that the RTC is in very, very good hands. And it's been really an honor and a privilege to get to do this, and certainly extremely educational. And I'm, I, I, it's, I have a real heavy heart, too.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna miss you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is, in my opinion, one of the strongest, most important agencies in Southern Nevada because of the service it renders and the planning, forward-looking, and so on. A strong management team. It's just been a real honor and a pleasure to be part of this organization. Keep on, keep on, keep on.
Thank you very much. It's truly been an honor working with both of you, and you've brought such strong leadership to this board, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. MJ, sorry.
Thank you. And we have one more goodbye, even though Mayor Pro Tem Anthony's not here. We still wanted to recognize the fact that he also has termed out. And so, our last farewell is to the City of Las Vegas Mayor Pro Tem Starros Anthony. Mayor Pro Tem Anthony has served on the RTC Board since 2019 and provided leadership and counsel on many of our initiatives. A very strong advocate for transparency and being fiscally responsible. Councilman Anthony ensured that we were actively communicating our roadway funding efforts and status of projects. He champions safety and security measure, measures, as well as future mobility options that benefit all users. With his background in law enforcement, he imparted his knowledge as we transitioned our security contractor, and he advocated for safety enhancements within our transit system. And he really did, he was able to provide some real keen insights as it related to our security efforts. So, we want to say thank you to Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Anthony for his many years of service to our community as a Metro Officer, as a City Councilman, and certainly as our Board Member. And so, again, we are gonna feel all of your absence, and again, I want to thank you for your leadership. We very much appreciate the time that we've been able to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you. And we're grateful to Mayor Pro Tem Anthony and his leadership as well. Thank you.
Okay, so next, I'd like to recognize an operator from MV Transportation. We received a customer letter praising this driver for his terrific service. To present the item, we have a video prepared by Deputy CEO Francis Julian.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we're celebrating an MV operator, Anthony Royal Jr. We're always receiving good customer comments for Anthony. Anthony always goes above and beyond. He helps passengers secure their bicycles when they know, they don't know how to, and he actually instructs new passengers on how to navigate our system. So, for this amazing customer service, let's go and celebrate Anthony. I'm Francis Julian. I'm the Deputy CEO for the RTC. And you are winning the Crystal Bus Award.
Thank you so much, RTC EP, for this lovely opportunity to show my skills. All I gotta say is, go out there, give it your best, treat everybody like you would your mom.
Is Anthony here?
Yes, please.
Anthony, stand and be recognized. Thank you for the important work you do. Thank you.
I love that. I agree, just like your mom. Okay, let's see. So, the next item in the CEO report is a special recognition of one of RTC's longtime supporters and advocates, Ms. Jean Payton. Last month, Jean received the Nevada American Planning Association, or APA, Citizen Planner Award. Jean has been a planning advocate for people of all abilities in Nevada for more than 25 years. She advocated for accessible bathrooms and inspired a state law that required building access for guide dogs. She's been relied upon by Nevada's Congressional Delegation to weigh in on proposed policies and legislation and serves as a volunteer mediator for Clark County's Neighborhood Justice Court. Jean also founded Blind Connect, which provides a training and peer support for people living with blindness in Angela's House, a 1,200 square foot apartment training facility housed within RTC's Mobility Training Center. With a passion for helping people overcome transportation barriers, Jean currently volunteers on two committees at the RTC, the Transportation Resource Advisory Committee and the Transportation Access Advisory Committee, where she serves as our Chair, and she's been doing that for many years. Jean is here today. We'd like Jean to please stand and be recognized.
Thank you very much, Jean. I was there when you received the award, and, and couldn't go to a, a better person or a more deserving individual for the work that you've done on behalf of RTC and the people of Southern Nevada, so thank you, and we're very grateful.
And lastly, I'm pleased to share with you that our very own Chairwoman Mayor Deborah March was recently recognized with two Leadership Awards. Last week, the Urban Land Institute Nevada named Mayor March as Placemaker of the Year for her work in creating spaces that promote health, happiness, and well-being. And just the week before, Mayor March was awarded the American Metropolitan Planning Organization's Honorable Mention for Outstanding Elected Official Leadership. This national organization recognizes only two elected leaders from across the country each year for their work in planning safe, reliable, and equitable transportation networks. So, this was a big deal. A way to represent the state mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor March was recognized specifically for her efforts with Fuel Revenue Indexing and Reimagine Boulder Highway, as well as the development and implementation of the Southern Nevada Regional Plan, Onboard Mobility Plan, and Access 2050, which is our regional transportation plan. As this was just announced at the National Conference this week, we have, we have the award here today, so congratulations, Mayor. So well deserved, that you've been recognized both here at the local level, but also at the national level, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. It truly is an honor. Thank you. Thank you, MJ. It's truly an honor to receive this.
Big deal. Congratulations to you. And this concludes my CEO reports.
Thank you. And do we have a report from NDOT?
Good morning. Yes, we do. Can you get that queued up? Is it?
Same thing. It's not queued up.
Perfect. All right, well, good morning. For the record, I'm Cole Mortenson, Deputy Director for the Nevada Department of Transportation. Normally, we have a little bit flashier slides than this, but we were a little late in getting our data this month, so what I'll do is I'll provide a little bit of an update. We did get some data in last night. So far this year, we've lost 312 lives on our system. That includes 66 pedestrian and 68 unrestrained motorists. One thing that isn't quite as big a deal here in Southern Nevada, but for the greater part of the rest of the state, we're starting our winter gear up for plowing the roads and keeping our roads safe. Our maintenance professionals perform nearly 75 different types of work tasks throughout the year, from snow and ice and debris removal to roadway patching, sweeping, slope enhancements, and more. We bring, begin our annual winter preparations in early fall by readying snowplows and other pieces of snow and ice equipment for snow removal across Nevada. We stockpile salt and sand at maintenance stations across the state to make it easier and safer for travel on winter highways. As we've been communicating, our vacancy rate is still at record levels. About 34% in Northwest Nevada, where most of the storms tend to be extreme, and we need all the help that we can get. We are nonetheless pushing ahead with hiring temporary highway maintenance workers across the state to help with snow plowing and anti-icing and highway emergency response, as more. As we prepare for winter, we want to remind all drivers just to be prepared for winter weather and the potential of being stranded somewhere, and make sure you have water, appropriate equipment in your vehicles, chains, et cetera. Maybe a little bit of food, and as always, drive safe and buckle up. This week is Crash Responder Safety Week, from November 14th to the 18th. There are approximately 50,000 crashes reported on Nevada roads every year. For every minute that the freeway lane is blocked by these crashes, the resulting traffic congestion takes about four minutes to clear, and the chance of secondary crashes increases. So, if we have an incident on the freeway that takes 15 minutes to clear, it takes about an hour for that congestion to go away. So, responding together for the safest, most efficient clearance of these crashes, we can help save the lives of crash victims and other drivers and first responders. In 2008, we founded the state's first traffic incident management coalition in Southern Nevada. The coalitions bring together our partners in law enforcement, fire, public works, and EMS, as well as private towing and hazardous material responders to train together. We now have a regional coalition statewide, including in rural Nevada. We have trained more than 74% of all Nevada incident responders in safe and quick clearance of traffic incidents. Just this year, nearly 600 Nevada first responders have been trained in traffic safety, traffic incident safety. The picture here shows a recent training held in Sparks in conjunction with our annual Traffic Safety Summit. The collaborative multi-agency trainings help, sorry, help responders throughout the state seamlessly work together to improve road incidents, response, and roadway safety while reducing travel delays. And for our viewers today, there's something that you can also do to help keep our roadways and our first responders safe. Nevada has a law requiring drivers to slow down, proceed with caution, and if possible, move over to the far lane when passing vehicles pulled over on the side of the road with lights on. In 2017, an updated law requires drivers to do the same for NDOT and other roadwork vehicles with flashing amber or non-flashing blue lights on. Nevada also requires drivers involved in minor, non-injury fender benders to safely move their vehicle out of the travel lanes when possible to help reduce the chance of secondary crashes for themselves and other drivers. Speaking of safety, I want to update the Board on the deployment of our Wrong Way Driver Warning System. AAA traffic studies say that, that the wrong way drivers' crashes lead to approximately 500 deaths each year nationwide. And in Nevada, wrong way driver crashes result in an average of five to six deaths each year, and that represents approximately 2% of our annual traffic fatalities. While this percentage isn't as large as, as large as other focus areas, wrong way crashes tend to be more severe. By their nature, they often involve high-speed vehicles crashing head-on in opposite directions or sideswipes. So, what are we doing? NDOT is currently, or currently has in place numerous wrong, wrong way signs on all freeway ramps to notify drivers entering the wrong way system, but we're actually on the leading edge, and we're going much further than that to combat wrong way driving. We're also on the leading edge of the state DOT's deploying wrong way driver detection systems. In 2016, we obtained approval through the FHWA for experimental installation of the red rectangular rapid flashing beacons. That's a mouthful.
Would you say that again?
Three times fast, see if I can make it happen. At select pre-approved interstate ramps, and we've received interim approval for additional locations in 2020. These red rectangular rapid flashing beacons have been installed to face wrong way traffic on exit ramps at these approved locations. The system uses radar and closed-circuit cameras to automatically detect vehicles entering in the wrong direction, activating two sets of red flashing wrong ways signs on the ramp. The first set of signs stands four feet high instead of the standard seven-foot height to best reach the driver at a lower level of vision. We installed these pilot wrong way driver detection systems on 20 US 395 ramps in Reno's North Valleys, as well as multiple I-80 ramps in Reno, and installed the preliminary infrastructure on US 95 at Kyle Canyon in Southern Nevada. In the past two years, the system has detected and led to the successful turnaround of 147 of 189 wrong way drivers preventing potential crashes. That means 78% of the potential wrong way driver collected, corrected, pulled over on the shoulder, and exited the roadway correctly, backed up and reversed their direction, stopped their vehicle prior to entering the off-ramp, or turned and traveled in the proper direction. So, with the success of these pilot systems, we plan to expand the wrong way driver detection system in the, in coming years. Our Wrong Way Driver Driving Countermeasures Study looked at research and wrong way mitigations in other states, as well as conducted a crash analysis of wrong way driving, crashes, crashes here in Nevada. We looked at crash data, land use data, interchange data, and citation data, and this helps us outline the countermeasures, outline a countermeasure implementation plan identifying interchange off-ramps throughout the state that are candidates for the wrong way driver detection system. Armed with this targeted list ramps, we are first addressing areas with existing infrastructure, such as existing conduit and pull boxes to accommodate the wrong way driver detection system. And this winter, we plan to invest approximately $2 million to install wrong way driver detection systems statewide. In Las Vegas, we'll install long, wrong way driver detection systems on the I-15 at the Star Interchange, as well as US 95 at Durango Drive, Kyle Canyon Road, and Sky Canyon Park interchanges. At these locations, we'll also implement newer technologies using radar and multiple sets of closed-circuit cameras for detection and pan tilt zoom capability, along with illuminators providing light for the cameras to help improve the level of success in our detection of the wrong way drivers. We will also evaluate how to approach other areas targeted for wrong way driver detection systems in the coming years. Now, we've seen the increase in impaired, aggressive, and distracted driving over the years, and in some cases, these types of unsafe, risky driving behaviors can lead drivers to be more prone to wrong way driving as well. In fact, most wrong way drivers are impaired. This is another way we work to combat the consequences that too often stem from unsafe driving practices. Another item that I wanted to discuss today is the HOV Pilot Study Changes. As we mentioned in the October meeting, the HOV lanes are in operation daily from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This means anyone can use the HOV lanes from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. As a reminder, the new HOV hours are part of a multi-years study that we're doing on the HOV system. We're looking at who uses the carpool lanes and during what times, as well as how much drive, or how much time drivers save with the HOV lanes and what percentage of drivers are breaking the HOV rules. We plan to evaluate this on a quarterly basis. After 18 months, our study team will recommend permanent hours of operation for the HOV lanes, which could include a return to the 24/7 restrictions. One other recent change, the HOV system are, or the HOV lanes are open to all drivers at all times of day between Spring Mountain and Silverado Ranch for the duration of the I-15 Tropicana project, so that we can hopefully keep traffic moving a little bit more smoothly through there. And we have heard that drivers were confused about where they could and could not enter, and made it easier, which should alleviate some of the traffic during the, the Tropicana project. One last note for the public, even when HOV hours are not in operation, you're still not permitted to cross the double white lines, just like any other road with solid lines. This ensures drivers enter and exit the HOV lanes in a safe manner. Next, I'd like to provide a brief summary on how NDOT approaches landscaping and, and trees in particular in our right-of-way. Some concerned citizens addressed NDOT Board of Directors in September with thoughts about the need for trees in Southern Nevada, along with the challenges that we've, that we have creating and maintaining a healthy system. NDOT established a statewide landscape and aesthetics master plan in 2002 and has been updating it periodically since. We know that trees are an important asset to our communities. They provide air quality by filtering out harmful particulates. They improve water quality by holding soil in place and reducing erosion. And trees cool down our over, overheated urban centers, and they sequester carbon within their trunks, branches, and root systems. The trees inside and outside of our right-of-way can improve the quality of life for residents and visitors. But we have challenges in keeping the trees alive and healthy in Southern Nevada. It includes vandalism to the trees and irrigation systems. We found people cutting the water lines for drinking purposes and breaking valves and boxes to access the wire inside. Additionally, an invasive bark beetle is causing damage to pine trees in the Las Vegas Valley. This is also a problem in the Mount Charleston area, as well as other mountains in Southern California. Aging irrigation systems that no longer operate automatically and need to be run manually to water waste when the trees are flooded and unhealthy trees, when too little, too little water is used. These are all challenges that we're trying to mitigate, which makes it more challenging for our limited staff to properly care for all the landscaped areas within our right-of-way. So fortunately, we have some good news when it comes to maintenance. We have a new service provider agreement, which allows us to employ a private contracting company to help our, to help augment our limited NDOT maintenance staff. It'll bring desperately needed help to the District One, to District One for landscape maintenance. In addition, we'll coordinate with other entities when appropriate to help the, with the care and maintenance of trees and landscaping installations. We're planning upcoming improvements on the Summerlin Parkway, and that includes updated irrigation, removal of dead trees, and replanting, and setting up a new, a new maintenance agreement. We have a pair of projects on the I-515 US 95 in the Southeast Valley, one at Charleston and one at Flamingo. Both include new irrigation, new trees, and other beautification efforts, and we'll continue to tackle this issue the best that we can while updating the Board on our progress. And now, updates on a few of our projects. First up, we've got the I-15 Charleston Project. It's in full swing after having started in August. This project widened and reconstructed Charleston Boulevard between Hanan Lulu and Sacramento, and widened the I-15 to allow construction of auxiliary lanes in both directions between Eastern Avenue and Charleston Boulevard. This is expected to reduce delays around the Charleston Curve and is, and also reduce crashes as drivers merge in and out of the main lines of the I-15. Long-term restrictions on Charleston started in late October, and Charleston is reduced to two lanes in either direction east of the I-515. That restriction will last approximately, approximately 11 months into late September of 2023. Work is being done on the north side of Charleston to relocate utilities and widen the road, and we expect some multi-week ramp closures at Charleston coming up after the New Year. You can follow the work on the project's website in both English and Spanish. Just check out I15Charleston.com for all of the traffic control details. Next up, we have the I-15 CC 215 Northern Interchange. It includes new direct connect ramps between the I-15 and, and Clark County 215 in the Northeast Valley. It reconfigures local streets to improve traffic flow around the interchange, provide landscape and aesthetic enhancements, and a separate project is currently expanding the I-15 to three lanes in both directions from Speedway to the US 93 interchange. We're happy to report that the full freeway-to-freeway interchange is nearing substantial completion. Crews are finishing open-grade paving on the flyover ramps, and one of our flyover ramps opened earlier this year. We anticipate another opening in the next week or two in December. Oh, sorry, and two more in December. There's more work on the landscaping aesthetics that'll carry into early 2023, and we plan to wave the checkered flag on this project in November, uh, checkered flag on this project November 17th to celebrate as we near substantial completion of this project. It's gonna be welcome news to dozens of businesses that have moved into that booming area since we broke ground on the project. It's also gonna benefit drivers who live in the, and work, live or work in the Northeast Valley, as well as help access to the Las Vegas Motor Speedway and Nellis Air Force Base. The next project that we want to talk about is the I-15 Tropicana Interchange Project. It's probably the most impactful work on southbound I-15 between Flamingo, south of Flamingo. We have reduced lanes for work on the shoulder, and we're also working west of the I-15 on Dean Martin Drive and on Tropicana, which has required several overnight lane restrictions. One big impact for drivers has been the lane reduction on the ramp from westbound 215 to northbound I-15, and that's where crews are installing infrastructure for the new active traffic management signs. I'm happy to report that the restriction is scheduled to be removed November 23rd. Some of the, although some of the biggest impacts are right around the corner. In January, crews will start to take down half of the Tropicana overpass, as well as the flyover from southbound I-15 to eastbound Tropicana. And so now is definitely the time to start preparing. We urge anyone who drives in that area to sign up for email alerts at I5, or I15trop.com, or download the free I-15Trop app to receive push alerts and notifications when things change. We anticipate substantial completion on this project at the end of 2024, with closeout work on Tropicana through mid-2025. So, get that app now, because you'll be able to use it for a little over two and a half more years. The next project we want to brief you on is the I-15 South Project. The project will improve the nine-mile stretch from Sloan to Warm Springs. It'll include additional lanes, repaving, rescribing, new sound walls, and the extension of the HOV system to St. Rose Parkway. The estimated total project construction cost is about $74 million. Earlier this month, we held an in-person public meeting for the project, and we've also been conducting a virtual meeting, which began on October 12th and runs through 5:00 p.m. this evening. We received dozens of great comments and questions so far, and we encourage the public to get in any last-minute comments today. We anticipate construction on this project to start in summer of 2023 and wrap up in 2025. And that concludes our NDOT report.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? You had a question about the wrong way?
Yes, just a suggestion or a question, actually. Out where those wrong way entries are and the flashing signs, are there solar panels on top to make them?
That is a good question. I'd have to get back to you on that. I, I, we, we have, in many cases, gone to using solar, solar panels, but in those areas, I think typically we have the infrastructure available to have, have it hardwired. I think in many cases, solar panels are a little bit better for us because we have dealt with so much vandalism and, and stealing of the copper wire. So, if we can eliminate the, yeah, so if we can eliminate the amount of copper wire we have out there, it's gonna be better for our system in general.
Highly recommend that we have in our neighborhood on some pilot lights that we've had up now for six months to try to see if they're helping, especially when there are blackouts in the neighborhood. Because living in an older neighborhood, but would highly recommend it for any of those, especially in the more remote areas.
Yep.
Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Metro One. To begin with, I just wanted to say, I'll be there for, I, I think we're planning ribbon-cutting for the interchange on, on the 18th, 17th, 17th or 18th. I'm not good with, with, with dates. But the most important thing is, this project, the I-15 215 Northern Interchange, that's gonna mean so much, I think, for the valley, in particular for North of Vegas. I cannot begin to express just how much thanks that I have for, of course, always for the RTC, but definitely for NDOT. RTC, but definitely for NDOT. We, just a few years ago, the, the thought, the image, the, we had an idea that having an interchange in that area would, would bring a lot of development into the area, bringing much-needed jobs and a lot of diversification that the valley desperately needs, and that's what's happening, you know? The growth in that area is astounding, literally a couple of thousand jobs can already be directly linked to the, to the efforts and improving the, the water infrastructure and also the road infrastructure going on there. And I cannot, again, I just cannot begin to express the depths, I mean, the heights of my, my appreciation for this event, I mean, for this project. One other thing for the director, I also wanted to give a big shout-out. I, I made a mistake. I was not able to properly send the photos, I think, to the RTC personnel. But last week, of course, we celebrated Days of the Dead, and my club, the Hispanic Student Union, in partnership with the RTC, put together an ofrenda, a cultural presentation that reflected, of course, you know, a tragedy that happened earlier this year with the most, one of the most impatful collisions that's ever occurred, not just in North of Vegas, but for the entire valley. And we honored the Sacre Rios family, who lost seven members, you know, and one tragic, and that's one tragic event. And so I'll show you guys the picture later on. The family was very, very pleased with, with the work, and I expressed to them that RTC had a lot to do with it. And I, I think it was very thought-provoking. It was kind of a tear-jerker, but it was also very thought-provoking. I think maybe we might have gotten the point, point across, you know? I, I think we had a little slogan there. Live joyfully, drive carefully. And so, yeah, that's, that's what, that's what we use as our slogan, and I hope to have Madam Chairwoman the pictures so we can see. And thank you very much. Actually, I think it was a commissioner, a secretary went out and actually took pictures with the students. So thank you very much for going out there, and also, they were very happy to take pictures with you there, Commissioner.
Commissioner, did you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I think I mentioned this before, but when we have out-of-state contractors that are being paid by NDOT or frankly RTC, they got to follow the law when it comes to registering vehicles if they're going to be here for more than thirty days. So just hoping that with contractors, they can follow the law and contribute to our economy here in Southern Nevada.
Thank, thank you. Okay, Commissioner?
Just like to ask a couple of questions. One, are you about finished with the improvements down at Round and Mesquite?
You know, that's, I would have to get back to you on, on the date that they actually anticipate getting those improvements finalized.
My second question is, I see something here about trees in, I recently saw the heat assessment that was done by the planning group here. Trees are one of the easiest and most effective solutions to the Heat Island concept, and I wondered if we could put an initiative together with the RTC and NDOT to really initiate some tree planting. It's an easy, easy start, at least, to that.
Thank you. Maybe that's something to look at.
And Chairman, I do, I sort of referred to David, I do believe that the county and cities, you are all starting to incorporate that into your planning process, Dave?
Yeah, in fact, Impact NV also has the hundred thousand trees over the next ten years, and I participated in one of the tree plantings just a couple of weeks ago at the park over there off Decatur in Vegas.
Wonderful. Cole, I do have one question for you, and it's with regards to the I-15 South map, the last one that you'd put up. I noticed that the Villanobilla interchange was not on that map, and I just wondered what NDOT's position is on that going forward. I see St. Rose and then Sloan, but Villanobilla is not there.
You know, I, at this point in time, I'm not entirely sure where we stand on that, so I would have to get back to you on the Villanobilla.
I'd appreciate if you would do that. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing no one, MJ?
Thanks, thanks, Chairman. The next three items, item thirty-four, which is to receive the fiscal year 2022 Single Audit Compliance Report, and item number thirty-five, which is to receive a report for the audit procedures performed on FRI for fiscal year 2022, that's fuel revenue indexing, and item thirty-six, to receive the fiscal year 2022 Audit Component Unit Financial Statements. After the presentation by our CFO, Mark Trostal, and the auditor, that can, those three can be taken in one motion, so I'll turn it over to Mark Trostal.
So first, we're going to approve the consent agenda, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
No, no, no problem.
I got so excited about this. Flawless component report, so yes, please, excuse me.
Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? We have a motion on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. And that motion carries.
Okay, now for the exciting news. And, and it really is exciting because before I turn over to Mark, I have to tell you that, you know, they get audited at, at least three times a year, and this is the first time that this team, and they are here today, the finance team, they, zero findings, and auditors like to find findings, right? That's, no offense, Crow, but they do, and so I'm just really proud. I'd love, before we get started, the finance team could stand up, please. All right, Mark Trostal?
They look like finance people, dark blue.
Super smart. We're really lucky to have them on our team. Okay, Mark Trostal, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, MJ. And our audits this year were performed by Crow LLP, Certified Public Accountants, and Brad Shell, our audit partner, is with us today and will give you a brief presentation and is here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you and good morning. I'll take that as some excitement for the audit. Don't normally get that type of reaction when the audit is coming up, so appreciate that. So good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Again, just, I wanted, before I get started on the presentation, I want to take a moment as well and just express my appreciation to management and the entire finance team for their efforts during the audit process. Again, I know we are not the only audit that they have during the year, and that's not their entire job, right? There's, it does take away from their day-to-day responsibilities, preparing for the audit, so I appreciate that. So in the agenda packet, I think you had three items there, items thirty-four through thirty-six. We'll start with thirty-four, which is the single audit, and I think that is the black binder. The single audit covers, has two different reports in there. There is the Government Auditing Standards Report and the Uniform Guidance Report. The Government Auditing Standards Report is geared more towards the financial statements and is under Government Auditing Standards. The second report, the Uniform Guidance Report, is specific to the major federal program that we tested, which this year was, again, the federal transit cluster. That makes up about one hundred and thirty-five million of the one hundred and forty-one million in federal expenditures you had during the year. So obviously, a good chunk of your federal expenditures were subject to testing this year. Within that, when you look at your federal expenditures, you had spent the last bit of Carissa dollars that you had, I think there was about a million dollars left on that that you spent during this year, and then you spent the majority of the ARPA funds this year as well, about fifteen million remaining on that for FY23. And I think I mentioned this last year, but, you know, really, as we look at that, that's a much quicker spend than what a lot of other transit agencies are doing. I think there's, it can take a lot of credit for that for, you know, trying to keep services and get services back to pre-pandemic levels, whereas maybe in some other cases, continuing to serve at a, at a lower level. So I think that's something to be commended for taking that proactive approach and trying to get those service levels back up. As far as the two reports themselves, no compliance findings, no compliance internal control issues either, so clean reports in both of those. So with that, I'll move on to the next one. Item thirty-five is the Fuel Revenue Indexing Report, and this is an agreed-upon procedures report, so we are performing the procedures that are laid out. Based on the completion of those procedures, we did not identify any exceptions, and so all FRI revenues were properly accounted for, and all of the funds were utilized on the approved FRI projects. That's it for that report. And then the last one is the larger one, your audited financial statements. A few things I'll point out in here, there was a new auditing standard change this year, so SaaS 134, not to get too technical on you, but there was a new standard this year that required some changes to the independent auditor's report. So as you look at that, you'll see if, the format of it looks a little bit different. There's some additional disclosure there about responsibilities both of management and of the auditors, but those are more just in form. Nothing really changed as, too much as far as what we were required to do or what management was required to do. Management's still responsible for the presentation of the financial statements, and we're responsible providing an opinion on those financial statements. So with that, we are providing an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. The financial statements are free of any material misstatements. A couple of highlights within there, there was one new accounting standard as well, so I mentioned the auditing standard, it was a new accounting standard, GASB eighty-seven, which covers leases and how those leases are accounted for. As a result of that, there was a right-to-use lease asset and a lease liability that was recorded at the implementation date, which was the beginning of the fiscal year, July one twenty-one, and that was, those were twenty-seven million dollars approximately each. So you increase your assets, increase your liability, there was no net impact, obviously, from that. Over time, you may see some net impact from that as the value of the asset will likely decrease or depreciate quicker than the liability will go down based on the higher implicit interest rate, but as of right now, no real net impact from that. And there are additional disclosures in the financial statements that talk about the lease and the, and the transactions there, so those are in notes one, two, and nine. Additionally, one of the things that I think I've mentioned in the past, again, while there is debt on the more county planning side of things related to highway improvements, the RTC transit side, public transit side, doesn't have any debt, which is, you're fully aware of, but I think is something that is a little unusual as we look at other public transit agencies, most of those do have debt, and I think that creates a lot of flexibility as you move forward, especially in the time right now where there's a lot of moving parts. We work with a number of different transit agencies across the country, including some of the largest ones, Los Angeles Metro, Chicago Transit Authority, MARTA in Atlanta. We also work with a number of the governmental agencies here in Nevada, not only the county and also the city, but we also work with RTC Washoe and, and the airport up in Reno, and also the Harry Reid International Airport. And I say all that and mention all that because I think it gives us a pretty good view both locally of what's happening in the, in the region and within the state, especially relates to governments, but also from a national perspective, from public transit and how that impacts. And what we're seeing is probably, you all are probably aware of a lot of the things that is, that are happening there, but really what we're seeing is a lot of change, right? And so transit agencies are having to be more nimble than ever in not only their funding but in how they're operating. And so I think some of the things that we noticed through that process is just, you know, again, the, the push to increase those service levels back up to the pre-pandemic levels. I know at times you've been having to reduce services again, maybe based on the operators or lack of operators available. That's obviously a common issue across the country. Also, the remote work has created a lot of issues in changing when transit riders are needing service, how they're needing service. And so I think the point being, there's, there's a lot of flexibility that's needed, a lot of nimbleness that's being, that's, that's needed, and oftentimes that is related back to your financials, and do you have the funding to be able to be nimble, or do you have the funding to be able to shift services as needed or create, add new service? And so I think it's important what you all have been doing, what the finance team has been doing, how you've been conservative in, in keeping those dollars, and so just wanted to point that out as something that we have identified and seen as we, again, look across different agencies that we work with. Lastly, again, just wanted to thank the RTC finance team, who was exceptionally responsive during the audit process, and continue to be leaders when it comes to knowledge sharing with other transit agencies. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions or comments with regards to thirty-four through thirty-six? I, I'd just like to share that I had the opportunity to participate in the exit interview, and, and I can say that I truly am impressed with the work of the RTC and appreciate the clean audit that we received from Crow. And I know that fiscal responsibility has been an important priority for this agency, and I think a lot of the decisions that have been made have been thoughtful and forward-thinking, and I think it allows us to be a much more sustainable organization going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we can take this in one motion, thirty-four through thirty-six? Correct. Motion to approve? And we have a motion?
Motion to approve the 2022 Single Audit Compliance Report and the Audit Procedures Performed After Revenue Indexing for Fiscal Year 2022.
Okay. And then the audited financial, the final one, which is the?
And 2022 audit component unit financials.
We have a motion, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And again, Mark, great job to you and your team. Madam Chair, the next item thirty-seven is to receive an update from representatives of the Transportation Resource Advisory Committee and Community Collaboration TRAC. I'll turn over to Angela, WCEO.
Good morning, members of the board. Today, we have Warren Hardy, who is the chairman of the, this, this phase of the TRAC committee, who will give you a presentation together with Brian Gordon with Applied Analysis, and they'll give you just a brief update on what we, what the Transportation Resource Advisory Committee did over the past year.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, members of the board. It's good to be here with you. I think I've been on the TRAC committee since its inception, and it's been an amazing, amazing process, starting with the beginning. I know I've been involved in public life in Nevada one way or another since nineteen ninety-one, and one of the things I've always been very proud of, and I point out to my colleagues in other states, is the regional government system we have and how well it works. It shouldn't. By all, by all accounts in politics, this type of thing shouldn't work, but it does because we have elected officials that put aside their needs and calculate the needs of their individual entities with the needs of everybody. I don't know that everybody really recognizes how remarkable that is in a republic, and so my congratulations to not just the RTC, but SNWA and others. So that's just an initial observation. The other thing I would say is something you already know, and that is how amazing our RTC staff is to work with and deal with and responsive, and I think we can all be very proud of our staff as compared to RTCs throughout the country. I want to thank the members of the TRAC committee, who I'm representing here today, and for the honor of being the chair of that committee. We've got a very diverse TRAC committee, and, and a lot of the congratulations on that goes back to this board for embracing the TRAC concept and the TRAC process. Not a member of the public can look at a decision that's made or a recommendation's made and say that they didn't have input. The TRAC process that you guys have, you, you as board members have created is remarkable, and in terms of transparency and the opportunity to participate in governance is unparalleled, and so it's just been an honor for me to be part of that. I don't, I'm not able to make the kind of recommendation I was hoping to make. I, after five years on this committee, I walked into this year's TRAC committee as hopeful as I've ever been, on aspiration. I've always felt like in the thirty years or so I've been involved in public office, that we really can't look ourselves in the mirror and say, yeah, we're the entertainment capital of the world unless we have quality, high-quality transportation. I went into this TRAC committee with aspirational hopes of what we might be able to achieve and accomplish going forward. Sadly, because of COVID, I, I left this TRAC process thinking there's an existential threat to our transportation system. to our transportation system. And one of the questions I asked the committee was, is there anybody on the TRAC committee that does not believe that we have to do everything we can to protect the basic fundamental minimum services of TRAC? There was not a single person that disagreed with that. It was my hope that we could talk about aspirational things. We could talk about what a transportation system in southern Nevada could become ultimately. It's everybody's goal. There's nobody that's happy about the fact that we've stalled on that a little bit, but we are now at a place, members of the board, where we have to go and prove and demonstrate and show that transportation is a critical, essential service for our residents and our underserved communities. And I just tell you that to preface what my friend Brian is going to report. We have to preserve the basic minimum services. That's the place we are right now, competing with other essential services. And I'm sorry to report that, but that's where we are. And our report today reflects the next steps. I do want to also mention how grateful I am to Brian and his team. I was telling them the other day in the TRAC committee, again, I've been involved in Nevada public life since 91, and I was trying to think of a time when a decision I made as an elected official was not informed by Brian and his company. I couldn't come up with one. So we were just incredibly, incredibly blessed to have him and his team as counselors on this. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you again for the opportunity to serve as chair, and I'll turn the time over to Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Warren.
Great. Thank you for the comments, Chairman Warren Hardy. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Brian Gordon, principal with Applied Analysis for the record. We've prepared a brief presentation just to give you the rundown of what's taken place over the last year as it relates to the Transportation Resource Advisory Committee. This really is, the chairman mentioned, the public's participation side of what's happening in terms of the RTC. We have a list of 30-plus members that participate from the public, everybody from business to hospitality and gaming, education, all sorts of industries and groups, including the major chambers throughout southern Nevada have participated in this process. So it's been a pretty wide-reaching group, and we got a lot of pretty good feedback along the way as well. And so I'll share some of the highlights with you as it relates to the process that we went through and really start with what the outset, what the objective was from the get-go. We've got this on the screen for you, but the idea here was that this committee would come back and provide your staff with some sort of recommendation to continue to explore some of these funding alternatives as they work through that process and evaluate in the financial position as it relates to the transit operations of the RTC. Over the course of the past 10, 11 months, we met five different times, really getting some of the members up to speed. We have a number of members that have been with the TRAC committee since inception for several years, and some were new to the committee this year. So we brought them on board in terms of educating them as it relates to mobility and the transit operations of the RTC. We also walked them through a great deal of financial information, the operations, the financial implications of what that operations looks like. We also talked about some of the challenges that exist as it relates to the transit operations, and so I'll share some of that with you. We vetted a number of potential alternatives between both the committee members and the RTC's consultants, our firm, as well as Hobbs, Ong and Associates, who's been critical during this process. So it's been a little bit of a team effort as it relates to the recommendations that are here before you today. So there were a few objectives or the process that we went through. If you want to think about it that way, it was really identifying where the transit operation stood from a financial standpoint, what are some of those challenges, what are the alternatives look like, how do we ultimately address some of those financial hurdles that are on the horizon, either from a cost-cutting standpoint or from a revenue generation alternatives that may want to be considered on a go-forward basis. So I'll, again, hit the highlights for you here to start. You've probably all been briefed about this at some point in time along the way. What I have for you here today is just the longer-run historical trend as well as the go-forward look in terms of what the transit operations of the RTC look like. Those above zero means there's more revenues than there are expenditures, and those below zero means there's less revenue relative to the amount of the expenditures. You see these green bars in 2021 and 2022. On the surface, it would appear that the transit operations are doing really well and robust from a net impact standpoint, but it's important note, this includes a lot of the elevated sales tax revenues that have taken place during the last couple of years, but more importantly, the federal stimulus dollars that have come into the operations. You see some of these shaded-out areas. This is really designed to demonstrate this nearly $300 million in terms of federal stimulus dollars are really being pushed forward to offset the ongoing losses of the transit operations. That pushes us out to about 2028. We call this the fiscal cliff, when we would essentially be out of funding as it relates to the transit operations for RTC. And you can see those numbers will likely continue to increase over time into the future. So what are the consequences of this? Really, we dove pretty deep into this with the TRAC committee. Your staff was pretty integral in this as well. One alternative is essentially to cut the cost side of the equation, and I think your staff has done that in the past, whether we think about the Great Recession, what unfolded during that timeframe in terms of making hard decisions, cutting services, cutting staffing, and those sorts of things. We've got a laundry list of things that have been done in the past. Some of that was done during the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic out of necessity, and so I think the team at the RTC is prepared to do those types of things if necessary. And so in terms of the fiscal cliff, I'm talking about this timeframe, and about 2028, staff would start to make some of those tough decisions prior to that, even as early as 2024, to ensure there isn't a bigger cliff on a go-forward basis. The final piece of the work that the committee went through was really designed to identify potential revenue alternatives that could be considered to shore up some of the shortcomings as it relates to the financial picture. We really settled on the five that you see on the screen here. The sales tax increase was one that was discussed in pretty good detail. The RTC received authorization for potential ballot question as it relates to increasing the sales tax rate back in, I believe it was 2017, if I'm thinking about it right. That was extended during the 19 session, essentially allowing for a potential ballot initiative by 2024. And so that is on the plate for this board to decide at some point in time. That was also discussed in pretty good detail as part of this TRAC process. There are a handful of other alternatives that were considered, including really looking inward, what are some alternatives in terms of raising revenue, looking at the actual transit fees that are generated today by the organization and potential increases, whether it's within the resort corridor or through the traditional transit services that largely caters to residents in the community. Those were looked at from an internal resource perspective. Then we also looked at what's called an alternative conveyance fee. I'll talk a little bit more about each one of these and then also potential delivery fees. So I'm going to walk you through in a very brief, high-level, really order of magnitude what some of these alternatives might mean. This isn't to suggest this is a recommendation from the TRAC committee. The numbers included in this particular packet are really just illustrative in nature, designed to give you a sense of what the revenue potential may be at different levels if that was the desire to try and move forward with any one of these particular options. You'll notice a lot of these refer to 2019 as the base year. We really wanted to look at the pre-pandemic levels in terms of the volumes that were taking place. So from a sales tax standpoint, you can see what that would generate if we were looking at, for example, an eighth of a percent increase in the sales tax rate. You're talking about $57 million in that example. Again, TRAC is not suggesting that's what should be done, but this is something on the plate, if you will, that the board may want to consider at some point on a go-forward basis. The next one that we looked at, I mentioned transit fees overall. Obviously, the goal and the objective is to get more riders on buses as part of the RTC's transit operations, looking at what that might mean from a resident standpoint, about 10 million rides on average during 2019. If you were to increase the fees, you can see what that generates, a relatively modest amount in the big picture in terms of the amount of revenue generation there, somewhere on the order of $4 to $6 million a year. And again, I think it's been quite some time since fees were raised, but I think the RTC did see some softening in terms of ridership at the point at which those fees were increased in the past. So again, something to consider, but really looking inward as the potential revenue alternative. The other would be transit fees, fares, if you will, throughout the resort corridor and what that might look like in terms of a potential revenue generation, a couple of million dollars, probably on the high side if you were to increase those fees by upwards of 25%. Again, really designed to give you an order of magnitude here, not a specific recommendation or dollar amount. The next one relates to transportation network companies, TNCs, the Ubers and Lifts of the world. This got a lot of attention during the course of the TRAC meetings. This graphic is just really designed to let you know that there are a number of communities, a number of jurisdictions that are considering or have considered or implemented TNC fees or taxes, essentially taxes on those rides that folks are taking in those types of vehicles. You get a sense of the wide range of potential taxes that have been charged across a number of communities. You have this in more than a dozen states around the United States. This is becoming increasingly popular as a potential revenue alternative for a number of organizations, and so we wanted to make sure we highlighted some of those here for you, and you kind of get a sense of where they're at. Again, I think if we were thinking about how people get around mobility around the community, we would not have been thinking about TNCs five, 10 years ago, right? This is a very new model and something that wouldn't have been contemplated quite some time ago. And so as part of this process, this concept of an alternative conveyance fee has been adopted or presented as part of this work. Really, that's intended, it could be anything. We don't know what the future transportation modes may be in the future, but really a wide-reaching sort of definition of what that might mean, has it been included here, what's in, what's out? There's not a specific recommendation here as it relates to that, but taking a look at an estimate of how many rides may be taking place throughout the southern Nevada community could be somewhere about 40 million rides excluding those specifically from the airport, based on the limited data that's been made available. And in this example of 50 cents per ride, you're talking about $20 million in potential revenue generation. Again, 50 cents is not a recommendation. The 50 cents is just to give you a feel for how much money that potentially generates. So again, order of magnitude, just designed to give you a sense of what that could potentially translate into. The other one that the committee looked at or spent some additional time on was this concept of delivery fees. Obviously, this has become increasingly popular in terms of food delivery services. Obviously, there's a lot of parcel delivery that takes place. The committee essentially drew the conclusion that this one would be put up on a shelf, probably for maybe future consideration down the road, not something that's more immediate term. This has only been implemented in one state, in the state of Colorado. There's still a lot of uncertainty surrounding these types of fees. Again, this is not a specific recommendation for all of you. This is, again, designed to give you a feel for the order of magnitude if there was a fee or tax implemented related to that. But again, this is probably further out in terms of the time horizon, just given a lot of that uncertainty that exists around something like this. But more and more communities are starting to talk about it, but we've only seen it approved or implemented in one particular market. Again, we'll put that one on the shelf for a little bit. Those were the, really, the primary recommendations of what RTC staff should continue to explore, continue to vet on a go-forward basis. Again, there wasn't a particular one or a particular dollar amount that rose to the top as part of that recommendation process. Rather, these were the ones that the committee recommended for future evaluation on a go-forward basis, and so that were the general conclusions the chairman had sort of referred to. And then I think next steps really relate to closing this out as part of the 2022 calendar year, as the staff prepares to go into the 2023 legislative session, will be there to support them wherever they need that, and then probably reconvening the committee sometime after the legislative session, I think, would be the game plan on a go-forward basis. So those were the prepared remarks. Hopefully, I've kept it succinct enough but given you enough information, so I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Let's go ahead. I'm being told by somebody... You're on now. Now I am. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Just by way of comparison, could you give, when you go back to the fee imposed perhaps on Uber, Lyft, and those types of conveyances, how does that relate to what cabs, state-licensed cabs are already paying? Where, what kind of fee is already generated that they have imposed on the taxi cab industry?
Yeah, I mean, clearly, there are significant revenues related to that. How that all stacks up? This being a new alternative, it's tough to say. And again, we'd have to figure out which rate we would be talking about. So I don't know if I have the exact order of magnitude on a relative basis as it relates to the taxi cabs.
But maybe I'm not clear. The cab industry is already assessed fees and whatever that come into the community. Uber and Lyft and other types of private conveyance, individual conveyance, they at this time are not at that level of imposed fees, or is that inaccurate?
I believe that's a correct assessment of how those fees stack up, yes. There are some fees on TNCs today that they do pay, but I think it's at a different level compared to the taxi cab industry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners? There's a question.
Thank you, Brian. I just wanted to, with each of these, I want to make sure what the pathway is. So when it comes to increased transit fees, we have that ability, I assume. With sales tax increase, is that something that the legislature would have to step in on, or are we already empowered to do that? Is it a ballot initiative? How do you get there?
I would defer to staff, but my understanding is that the RTC is authorized to initiate that ballot process through 2024.
For the record, it's Angela Castro. Commissioner Brian is correct. We are authorized, but technically, we would work with Clark County and the board, the Clark County Commission, to get it onto a ballot if that is what this board chooses and decides to do. And it reads, we have any time on or before 2024. So we would have, something to consider would be in 2024, as written today.
Okay. So that would be a recommendation from this board to the Clark County Commission to put it on the ballot?
Correct.
Okay. And with regards to alternative conveyance fees and delivery fees, that is, the legislature would have to either pass it themselves or enable the Clark County Commission to take the bullet again and pass it themselves?
That is a true statement, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have a question?
So you're basically passing the buck to us? You're not going to recommend anything?
Was that a question?
Commissioner, yeah. The committee developed the recommendations. As you see, there's some hurdles in different measures in terms of how you go about handling those, and so the recommendation of the committee would be for the staff to...
I was just trying to get a rise out of Warren.
See, tickets, because we get all the big money here, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Warren Hardy, for the record. This is the reason I began the conversation or the report with, this is not the report I want to give. There's not a lack of desire to make a firm recommendation at this point because of where we are with the economy, because where we are with everything, we don't have enough information. So we are kicking the can down the road. As long as I am involved with TRAC committee, at some point, we will come with a solid recommendation for you. I believe that's the reason we exist. We're just not ready. And it's, it matters beyond our control at this point. Thank goodness for the money that we have extended out the fiscal cliff a little bit, but that's the answer to the question. We are passing the buck, but we're not, because ultimately, we will make a recommendation.
May I? I'm so sorry to do it again, because another thought came to mind and through you, Madam Chairman. Knowing that you're so excellent and your company, Applied Analysis, has been integrated into everything that I've heard of in the past 15, 20 years, maybe longer, what are you looking at? What are you seeing by way of comparatives to other cities such as ours? Size, tourist, you know, New Orleans, Orlando, as to their, I'm sure, the comparisons, they do the same thing we do. Are we better off? Are we worse off? What have they, is there somebody beyond the data piece that is doing the research in TRAC comprehensively to other similar communities?
Madam Chair, to the mayor, I would just say that's a central thing that we look at at the TRAC committee. But we are also very mindful that Nevada is very different in terms of our business models, in terms of our tax structure, in terms of all those things. One of the things I personally believe we have to do, and I am personally advocating for, is that we, again, once again, do a price-waterhouse-type tax study of our revenue structure in Nevada. Haven't done it since 1989 on a holistic, global basis. It really needs to happen. Some of the answers we need here, because it's very difficult, Madam Mayor, to just reach out and do comparisons with other similarly situated in terms of population, because we're very different. we're very different here in terms of our tax structure, in terms of our need, in terms of our industries. So every time we look at these things, in my estimation, we're plowing new ground to some degree.
Well, and if I might continue, Madam Mayor, Chairman, woman. Certainly, Florida is comparative in the tax structure. So Orlando, and because they're a tourist entity as well. I know New Orleans is different, but Texas, Florida, Nevada have that structure. And I just, I don't know. I mean, obviously, it's nothing to, at this point, but just to have those figures, what have they been doing? They demand their tourists, they demand the visitors, and their prices are so much higher than ours for everything. But what are you seeing, what they're doing to keep up and get ahead and be able to service our people who are in rural areas as well, wanting to come in closer to the area? So it's just a thought, and I'm sure you have somebody that, I mean, that the whole track committee is doing research, but-
Yeah, thank you.
What are those?
Madam Chairman, Your Honor, yeah, that's really essential, and I don't want to interrupt, Brian, but that's really kind of central to everything we look at. What is working elsewhere? What is not? We don't want to plow new ground unless we have to. And then, but we take that and compare it to uniquely Nevada, especially Southern Nevada model. But that is central to everything I ask for as Chair. What is happening in other communities? Are there comparisons? There are some. Florida, you know, even drilling down to a city level like San Diego, and there are some things we can draw to inform our decisions. So yes, thank you for that, and we are very, very in touch with that and wanting to know how other states are dealing with this. We take field trips, and I haven't done one of those since third grade, but those have been fun.
Perhaps at some point in the future, you could come back with some of that information or a report to the board.
We would be happy to, and I think it's a great question, just the high points. We did address this during the track process, and so we looked at a number of comparable jurisdictions and systems. And really, what we found was that our system's revenue stream is very narrow. It is primarily driven by sales tax and transit fees and then some grant funding, but the overwhelming majority of the revenues are coming from those two sources as it relates to the transit operations, where other communities have a more diversified revenue structure, a lot of them including revenues originating from property taxes and other sources. So we have a narrow revenue side of the equation. On the expense side, we also looked at efficiencies and the cost to provide the service on a per rider basis, on a per capita basis. And the operations in Southern Nevada were highly efficient relative to some of those other markets that you just mentioned on a cost-per-capita basis. And so we have a narrow revenue base, and we're, it's also operating at a relatively high efficiency level. And so that differentiated us from a number of the other markets that are similarly situated.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to share, this was valuable discussion, and obviously, we need to continue to study this and maybe even perhaps that price waterhouse study around taxes across the valley, across the state, I think may be critical. You know, this agency is really charged with, you know, ensuring sustainable, that it's a sustainable organization, but that we're providing transit services for those who need it in our community. And so we have to be thinking out, not only, as we looked at the numbers out to '28, '29, it's a little disturbing, and I think what we need to be looking out 10 years and planning ahead and making the case to the public that there are some solutions that we have to put our arms around and figure out how we're going to ensure that our public has the ability to travel across our community, those that don't own vehicles or need to look at other options. I think we have got to be serious about this, and I know I won't be here after this year, but I think it's an important priority for this organization to ensure that we're looking at potential alternatives for funding going forward. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead.
Well said, Madam Chair. Item 30 is receive information from our legal counsel. There's no items to discuss this month, so the last item is your, to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comment and state your name for the record. And I have a couple cards here.
Commission staff, Dennis Hennessy, driver for Keolis, been in your organization for 13 years. I know I told you last month I wasn't coming, but I'm angry. I'm real angry. But I'd like to address your auditors. Maybe if you were to audit the security part of the financial statement and audit whether you're getting what you're paying for, that might help too, because I guarantee you, the millions of dollars you're paying for it, we ain't seeing it out on the roads. Why I'm angry? Since your last meeting, we had a passenger that got into a scuffle or into an altercation on a bus, got off the bus, and got killed by the person that he was in the scuffle with. News media reported that it was a drive-by shooting. It wasn't. It was the second passenger that has been killed getting off a bus in the last six months, if you recall the incident on Maryland Parkway, where the guy was stabbed. We had another driver assaulted this week on Decatur. Do you think these two companies, MB or Keolis, are telling us about it? Their radio system's something to warn us if we're out there? Nah, they don't care. But I'll tell you what, they care. They're all here to bow down to you guys so they can get the bid. They don't care about their drivers. They don't care about our safety and security. I drive Flamingo three days a week. I had a passenger pull a knife on another passenger Monday. The response I got from our BOC after I called to report it and then ask if they could let marksmen know that there was nuts out on Flamingo, it was a full moon, it was crazy, I got a joke. Well, we can at least be glad we're moving on. That's the way this company takes it. It's a joke. They have, who I think is the best safety and security person in the country, in Cecil Fielder, but yet, nothing gets done to protect us. I'm angry, and if you guys can't do it and they can't do it, maybe a lawyer can do it.
Are you going to help me up to the microphone? Hi, my name is Shelley Jones, and I've been a resident here since '93. And I'd like to say that I really like the U-Serve program that you guys have. I also like Tango, and there's a lot of RTC drivers that I do like, Prepare Transit. But there are changes that need to be made. And I've stated this in the past, and I wish somebody would take heed to what the situations are and do something about it. And that, I support the drivers because they have a lot to deal with when they're out there, with the traffic and construction and everything. And some of the clients that ride the bus are very hostile towards the people that pick them up because they're upset that their ride is late, they don't get to appointments on time, and if you need to go to an appointment, you're told you're late, you have to come back in six months or a month, whatever the case may be. I have been late to doctor's appointments. So I called up, what's the point in setting an appointment time if I can't get there on That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Dorothy Barnes. I think Dorothy's up in the back, up at the top.
Hi, Dorothy Barnes. I haven't been at your meetings since I arrived back in Las Vegas from my hometown, Shreveport, Louisiana. I lost my oldest brother during the pandemic, and after I got back here, I lost my sponsor, who was a very dear lady at St. Thomas More, and she also was an employee at University of Las Vegas, Caroline Kardashian. She died of cancer of the brain, and I had the opportunity to go over to the House of Mercy and visit with her and her family during her passing, right before her passing. But I've struggled with some things since I've been back. I've been a resident of this city over 20 years. I remember when it was CAT, Citizen Area Transit, and we faced some difficult times, but I know Vegas is hashtag strong. We faced 500 mass shootings at Manly Bay. I was on the deuce the night that happened on my way up, and they detoured us. So this city is a strong city, full of strong people and determined people to carry on through hard, difficult times. And even with the hard times that I see the bus companies struggling with now, and I thought about the big strike we had, and we survived it. I say "we" because we're all a part of this thing. And I ride the bus on an everyday basis, and I get lied on. And it's very sad that I have to come before you with this, because you remember before, I wasn't on a walker. I'm 65 years old now, and my body just can't take much more. I'm just like an old car. You have to crank me up in the morning, and it's hard to get started sometimes when you get this age and you're struggling with health conditions. So I come here today, asking for some answers to getting my name off of this program where they're selling illegal drugs. I've had drug dealers threaten my life. They better not get busted. And I said, well, who's putting my name in here? I left here, I was gone a year and a half. I got back here last October, this, yeah, last month, it's made one year I've been back. I was only gone a year and a half, and I come back because I couldn't stay away. And I wanted to move, I couldn't. I have children and grandchildren, three daughters, 16 grandchildren, one great-grand in Louisiana, so my heart is here, and I want them to move here with me, but they have their jobs and lives there. But I'm saying this, I don't know who puts people on the bus line to lie on me, to keep my name from being removed off the program. Drug dealers are getting rich. I've had to live homeless. They've divvied me for income. It's stifling, they call it stifling. I say it's a dignified way of robbing a person without a gun or a knife. I mean, who needs anybody to show up with a gun or a knife? So I know it's hard to be a bus driver here. It's hard to work in a public eye every day of your life, and your life is on the line, and I sympathize with them. And I wish they would sign this promise there, no. And they go on Ellis, Dorothy Barnes, I wish the doctor would let me in there where they allow other disabled people, and I won't have to struggle, but the doctors have a big job here. Everybody, thank you, God bless you all.
Thank you very much, Dorothy. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? I have no other cards, so please come forward if you're going to speak. You can all come line up. State your name for the record.
Good morning. Sandra Adams, Vice President, ATU 1637. I have a serious concern. Every month, we're here, we listen to the different routes that have all this road construction, and one in particular is Charleston. Our drivers are driving 15 to 30 minutes down all day long. Our routes are anywhere from nine to 11 and a half hours. They're turning and burning. Our accidents are skyrocketing, and something needs to be done. I don't know if these time points need to be turned off or something, but, you know, the schedules are passenger-friendly, but it's killing our drivers. They're stressed out, they're fatigued, and something needs to be done. We can't drive like this all day, every day. I mean, our buses are, if you're on Charleston, you see three buses back to back to back. We got detours. Our paddles are so tight, they're running to the restroom. They can't eat, they can't drink, they can't do anything. Something needs to be done to protect our drivers. I've discussed it with our GM, and he stresses, you know, drivers, take care of yourself. If you gotta go, you gotta go. If you gotta stretch, you gotta stretch. Do what you have to do. Don't just turn and burn all day. So someone needs to have a little compassion for our drivers and do something about this. We know a project is going to last a year or two years. Our schedules should be made according to that schedule, and we should not have to drive like this or fear that we're going to be disciplined or something for being late all the time. It's not a good thing to drive that long and not have a break. We have no lunch, nothing. So someone needs to consider us. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name for the record.
Laritha Saraphin.
Could you get closer to the microphone so we can hear you?
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Sorry, guys. Okay, so a couple of days ago, I had a bad incident involving a gun. At least, it was traumatizing to me. Didn't seem like it did too much to BOC nor marksmen when I made contact with them first. Marksmen's response to the incident pretty much was to continue texting on the phone he was on when I approached the rover. BOC's approach to it was for me ultimately just to beware of my surroundings and to drive safely. I wasn't even asked to write a statement, as per usual. We can't do so much as bring a personal firearm with us on the property or leave them in our personal car, which is amazing, yet I'm being trivialized and condescended when people in this world don't have the same restrictions. Again, I'm not really understanding why this is so trivialized. I have two children to go home to. I went home early with them, and I just asked myself, am I being discriminated against for race or gender? It has to be one or the other. I am a hard worker. I work six days a week mostly. During my shifts, I work two extra hours. I pull my weight, and I do a darn good job. Why am I being passed over so easily? I'm not trying to abort any job duties. I'm not trying to get out of a trip, make anything hard for anybody, but with all that went on, me maintaining the coach, me making sure the people were safe, I felt chastised and undermined, and my priorities were only to keep them safe, when my own people that I work with, the people that I report to, the people that are supposed to support me and at least offer an alternative to get another bus, did not even have my back, you know? It's really hard. It's really hard. BOC's carelessness placed me in a position to where I wasn't even thinking about myself. I'm thinking about still going out there, still finding another alternative for myself, and they couldn't even ask me a simple question as, do you feel safe to continue?
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Tanisha Tatum Watson. I am operator for 19 and a half years here. I am also the executive board officer for the ATU Local 1637. I am the quiet one. I never get up here and speak. But, you know, enough is enough. I mean, I've been a resident here for 27 years, and, you know, we come to these meetings all the time. I've been here for years and years, and we voice our concerns, and nothing is being done. Nothing is being done. So I'll just read what I wrote. Over the years, Las Vegas bus operators, we have voiced our concerns on the adverse effects caused by privatization of the public transit system. We are subjected to low wages, poor and unsafe working conditions, hostile work environment, weak benefits, and no cost of living raises. This only minutely touches the issues that the people who move the Las Vegas city and Clark County deal with on a daily basis. Not only do we have to deal with these profit-hungry companies disrespecting us, but we also have to deal with the public's disrespect. We are- us, but we also have to deal with the public's disrespect. We are constantly verbally and physically assaulted with no consequences to the offenders. It's unsafe. These companies create bid schedules that have 11 to 12 hour paddles and graveyard shifts with splits. It's unsafe. And that comes down also from the RTC with the planning department. I don't know what's going on with the planning, but it sucks. It really sucks. We need to get some better blocks for these runs. We can't humanly, it's not even humanly possible to do some of these routes in the time that you want them done. There's been an issue with a company not purchasing parts, which has caused poor maintenance of the operating equipment. It's unsafe. I can go on and on, but there's not enough time. The only solution is to cut out the middleman. It's what I feel. We need to cut out the middleman and become a public transit system. I know it's not going to happen, but this would cut the high turnover rate. Not only would it help drivers, but it would benefit the RTC in sustaining profit and retaining quality operators. Things are supposed to get better with age. I've been here 19 and a half years. I had better runs at my six and seven year than I have now.
Thank you.
And it's bad.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. I actually thought I was going to come up and share some different information. But I do understand the frustration of the operators and the mechanics. Since, firstly, I'm sorry, I apologize. My name is Terry Thompson. I'm the Vice President and GM for MV Transportation. I've been here probably close to 90 days now. And it's been a very eye opening experience. You know, we are really trying to deal with the dysfunctionality of the transit system on our side of the house. And contrary to the gentleman's position, we do care about our employees. And we're trying to make every effort to improve the safety and security. That's one of the top priorities that we have. But not only that, the respect that we show for our employees, the appreciation that we show for them. I mean, these employees do a very difficult job, day in and day out. And I understand that. And I own that. And I've made changes within our management staff to help correct a lot of the challenges that we have, to address the comment about the schedules. There's an upcoming service change that RT has already committed to correcting those issues. We encourage our operators to take a break, take a 10-100, call it into the box when you have to. So we're not asking operators to go out there and drive without taking a break or without putting safety first. Your safety is first. And that's the message that we have to do better at communicating. And I'm committed to that. I believe we're making significant progress. We're working very well with the union. I wanted to talk about something that came up last month regarding the MOU that Keolis signed with their drivers regarding wages. That created some friction. Some of our drivers came up. We had the town hall meeting, and we took that feedback to our executive team, and they took immediate action. So I'm here today proudly to say that we've entered into MOUs with both unions. We're taking care of the drivers, mechanics, and supervisors. So we're doing our part. And I own it. Every time I come here, I'm going to own it. And I'm going to stand behind these operators because they are the heart of what we do. So you have my commitment, and they have my commitment. So I'll do my best, excuse me, I do my best to answer any questions that I can. But it does hurt when you hear people come before you pouring out their hearts. And I see it. And I feel it. And it hurts. And I'm going to address it. So I'll answer any questions that I can.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Next. State your name for the record.
My name is Peter Murray. I'm an operator with Keolis. I've been there 17 years. I drive the strip. Madam Chairlady, fellow commissioners, I'm not here today to complain. I know there's a lot wrong with the system, a lot wrong with the companies that we work for. But I wanted to come today to say thank you to this board for the work that you do. A lot of the work that you do is behind the scenes. Nobody sees it. Nobody probably knows who you are. Commissioner Gault, I see you're here. You're all the way from Mesquite. You have to make that two hour drive down here. I just wanted to say, there are a lot of us here who appreciate the work that you do. And we know you work behind the scenes. You're largely unsung, unnoticed. You have a day job. I appreciate you, and I hope that going forward, the challenges that this commission faces, and they are huge in terms of getting us the funding and making the changes that we know we need. We all listened to that track report. It's a monumental challenge to bring Vegas, if we are the entertainment capital of the country, to bring us up to speed with somewhere, for example, like Phoenix. I spoke to, I was happy to speak to Commissioner Segalblom when he visited our facility. And I expressed that concern to him. So thank you for that. And in addition, I also want to thank the commission for the leadership that we have at the RTC. I want to make mention of MJ Maynard and Frances Julian. I met MJ briefly six years ago. I didn't know who she was at the time. And I was immediately impressed by her spirit, her talk about community, the way she listened to us as operators. And I mean, I haven't had much interaction with her, but I know the leadership will trickle down to the rest of the people in the RTC. I want to thank Mr. Julian for his role in making us feel, making us know that we had someone that we could talk to. And if I can just share this?
Go ahead and wrap up your comments.
My time is up?
No.
Yeah, I just want to share this one story about Mr. Julian. I joined in 2005, where the starting wage was $9.30. In 2015, the starting wage was $9.30. 10 years later, and in one year after Mr. Julian came, it went from $9.30 to $15. So Keolis may want to take the credit or MV, but I know, and a lot of us know, that that was solely the work of Frances. And I want to say thank you, Frances. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry Richards.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
My name is Terry Richards. I'm the President of ATU. I'm not real good at public speaking.
You got this.
But I did want to say thank you for trying, because I see that both Keolis and MV did come through with a little bit of wage increases for our operators. A lot of us do appreciate that. I had a lot of other stuff I was going to say, but Laritha really got to me, because I just found out about her incident the other day. I want you also to know that she's not the only one. Other operators have come to me and talked about, and it's like the kids in a gray BMW that are going around pointing guns at the drivers on the strip. When a person points a gun at your bus, you don't know if it's real or not. And I had to commend her for even thinking enough to try to get the bus over to the side to get safe. She saw the marksman person up ahead, and her first thought was get to him, because that's where my safety will be. Me, I'd have rammed the car. I would ram the car, try to get it off the road. I don't know what kind of gun he got. But she did a great job. But it hurt me when she said that when she got to the marksman person, that he was doing personal stuff on his phone. Okay. But when she told him what was going on, instead of him going on down and seeing if he could get that car's license plate at the next corner, or calling the police, or whatever he was supposed to do for her, he said, well, they're gone now, so we're good. I don't think that was a good, a good thing. I'd have been mad at him. I'd have been ready to fight with him. You don't, nobody cares about my safety. I would feel the same way she did. Or when she called the BOC, and they tell her, what kind of gun is it? I don't know. It's a gun. You should have been trying to help me, not asking me to get questions like, you want me to get out the bus, go over to the car and ask, hey, what kind of gun you got? These are the things that they come here every week and talk to you guys about. You can't do anything about a situation that just happened yesterday. But at least going forward, we could work more. Can we work more with these marksmen people? Last time we came, we had the focus meeting, and the guy that was the head of marksman said, we're working on it. We're working on it. But it seems like things have gotten a little worse since that time. Also, I'm hoping that we still get a chance to meet with Frances about the blocking and get the schedules better, because it is killing our drivers. And what's happening is they're getting dinged with attendance infractions. Because once your body shuts down, you could work all day long, your mind can tell you you want to be there. But when your body shuts down, your body shuts down. And you don't have that to get up and go to work. But you still get dinged with an attendance infraction. So thank you very much. And
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Doyan Skirka. I represent Keolis. Couple of things. We're looking into Larita's situation. We are spending a tremendous amount of effort and time digging into the BOC. That's our communication team, trying to see where we need to improve. We got a lot of results from the driver meetings with the RTC, targeting, you know, their comments about the ineffectiveness or their concern with our BOC. The union and I have also met, I guess it's about three weeks ago, and that was an agenda item for us to go in there and start tracking and understanding what type of responses are being sent out from that office. So we're going to look into that. And I apologize that it had to be presented here. Also, we are working with the RTC with a security committee that's being formed. So security, driver security, system security is a priority for all concerned. And I would, I'd say that for the RTC if they wanted to comment on that. But we'll look into that situation.
Thank you very much. Alida?
Thank you, Chair Deborah March. Alida Dupree for the record, she and her. Thought I'd save the best for last. It's good to be back with you. Still using the app, six years now, using the app. I was one of the first. Get my bus pass every month. And I did have company about two weeks ago, and rode buses quite a bit, getting on the 119. It's a good back weight on the strip, Spring Mountain, and down by Flamingo, and getting behind the link, and Harrah's, et cetera. How do we take our bus system to the next level? I didn't get to speak earlier, but I'm looking forward to prioritizing the new equipment, get the hydrogen and electric buses on the road. And how do we move further into our advancing our fare collection? I have the app. I like the app. But not everybody has smartphones. And even though many can get free smartphones, and smartphones have a lot of good technology, especially for people with disabilities, it takes time. And some people are afraid their phones are going to run out of battery. So how do we get past the unregistered, easily damaged, and lost paper ticketing? So in New York, they have this system called Omni. I went to their board meeting on Zoom. And it's like 189 countries around the world are represented by people who tap their cards to ride their bus system and their legendary and historic rapid transit system called the subway. I'm sure some of you have seen it. I have used the New York City subway on and off for 52 years. And someday, that system is going to be on the railroads. And I have 42 years of experience with Grand Central Terminal and 52 years of experience with Pennsylvania Station. But we can do that here. People want it. I can even do reduced fare on New York City's Omni system. They just implemented. I'm registered. So I can do reduced fare here. I'm all set up with that. It's a good system. How do we move past the old ways? But some in the world hang on to the past. But we have to move forward. And I hope we can get more of these electric buses and hydrogen buses. And it's a treat when I do it in Oakland. They have fuel cell buses and occasionally a battery powered bus I get to ride. And, but I think when I'm done here, I'm going to go outside. I'm going to get on a bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, this meeting is adjourned.